I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman.
Here.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez. Mr. McIrvin.
Here.
Ms. Switche.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that we excuse the absent council member.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we excuse the absent council member. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, next up is the administrative report. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I have two items today. First, just a reminder to start your new year off right with an icy dip into Lake Washington. You can join the city at Jean Coolin Memorial Beach Park for the polar bear plunge on Tuesday, January 1st at 11:00 a.m. If you're interested in more information, go to the city website at rentonwa.gov/events. And the second item is the Renton Senior Activity Center will host a free newcomers' hour on December 20th at 10:00 a.m. You can meet the staff and learn about all the available programs and activities, including recreational, social health, educational, and nutritional services. Again, you can find more information at the city's website at forward slash R S A C. That's it for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is audience comments. We have five people signed up for audience comment. When I call your name, please call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and city of residence for the record. You have five minutes. First name is Nancy McKinnon.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in front of the council and the mayor. I'm calling in support of my fellow RHA members and citizens of small business owners. My name's Nancy McKinnon, I'm from Kirkland, Washington, and I am an RHA member. I'm calling in reference to ordinance 5913. I realize that all members' parties have been working on this ordinance for quite some time, but I still feel that the issue in reference to fees and how they're distributed, you know, I have a small property, I'd be judged as the same as a larger one, and I know there's other small, critical units that are provided for your community, and I just wish you'd just take another look at that aspect of the ordinance and appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is William Shadbolt, I believe.
My name is William Shadbolt, city is Mercer Island, and I'm the president of the Rental Housing Association. For over 80 years, the Rental Housing Association has represented the small landlord, the mom-and-pop landlords. We've been heavily involved in this ordinance 5913, I believe, for over two years, and before I make comment on the actual ordinance, I would like to extend my thanks to the city of Renton staff, and particularly Chip Vincent and Angie Mathias, who have been absolutely fantastic to work with. We think that it is a good ordinance, we just think that there is one significant issue with it, and a couple of minor ones. The significant issue is the fees. We think that the fees should be fair, they should be equitable, and probably most important, they should be constitutional. So currently, the way that it works out is it is a flat $150 annual fee to each landlord. The problem with that is, as I have a couple of visual aids, is that on single-family homes, we look to two other cities, the city of Bellingham is a similar size to Renton, and obviously our bigger neighbor, Seattle. So for a single-family home, which is in blue, Bellingham and Seattle really don't charge a significant amount, yet over 10 years, it would be $1,500. So that really impacts the small landlords, yet at the same time, the larger apartment units that are, for example, 100 or 200 units, the two different colors, in Bellingham and Seattle, they're charged a reasonable amount of money, which is around $15,000, $16,000, and in Renton would be the same, $1,500. This just can't possibly be equitable. You know, another way of looking at it is what's the cost burden? So you've got a single-family rental in Renton, the cost per unit's $1,500 over 10 years. You take an apartment building, like for example, the Gramercy with 180 units, the per-unit cost is $8.33. It just isn't equitable. So instead of Washington, there is a lawsuit that's based on many other lawsuits before that called Cavell versus the city of Seattle, there's three tests whether a fee is a fee or whether it's a tax. And the flat fee unfortunately breaches the third test, which there has to be a direct relationship between the burden created by the fee payer or the service received, and this frankly just does not. So it becomes a tax, and under the uniformity clause of the state's constitution, would be unconstitutional. I would like to point out that the city of Renton already has three other additional types of licenses. After having a conversation with a council member last week, I got in touch with the company that runs the online general business license, and they're more than willing to do a separate rental business license, so it'd be cost-effective to do it that way. Couple of other minor issues, we're asking that there be an exemption for the cost of the fee to people that house Section 8 voucher holders. It's difficult to get landlords to take Section 8 voucher holders, and it's a program that the Rental Housing Association supports. What they would do is that they would register, but they would be exempt from the fee, and I've provided the city with the copy of Bellingham's ordinance, which actually does that. The other one that is of our concern slightly is that it does require the tenant's consent for an inspection of a unit, and we'd just like it to be clear on the consent form that is part of the checklist, that the tenants would have to give consent as well as the landowner. What I'm asking you is to defer this. I personally have been working on this issue for more than two years with the city. I don't think it's unreasonable to spend a little bit of time and get the fee section of it right, so it's fair, it's equitable, and it's constitutional. And for that reason, myself and the Rental Housing Association are asking for a short period of time so that the city could come up with a fee structure, one that we are happy to work with on them, and in fact, I gave some spreadsheets previously on that issue. And I'd like to thank again the council for this evening, for their time and commitments and the civic purpose of the city of Renton, and again, thank the city staff that have been very professional to work with in this entire process. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Corman.
We're so close to arriving at a good solution to this, and I know we have talked this before, and I don't want to really stir the pot too much this late, but I guess I would like to know, maybe our city attorney could tell us, if we're approving budgetary items for next year, I mean, is it possible that something like this could be deferred without us, you know, harming all the other closure of all the budget activities, or?
Yeah, I'm probably not the best person to answer whether it'll affect the budget issues. Most of what's been raised is just policy issues as to whether or not you guys are ready to go forward with it, but I think I would defer to Jan on whether or not delay into January would create an issue with the budget to where... I don't know the answer to that, sorry.
I don't believe that it would have a budgetary impact. This is following it up with the code provisions. We already adopted the budget, so it's in place and can move forward at any time. I don't know if there's any administrative items that would be delayed as a result of it, though. That one I would have to defer to Chip.
Chip? And so I will say this, we've been looking at this for a long time. We're near the end, so I want to date certain if we are going to delay it. I don't want it just to hang out there. Chip?
Yeah, with respect to budgetary impacts, for the department, there isn't any. If you remember, one of the key provisions built into this ordinance is that two of the three positions aren't going to be filled in 2019 because we're going to spend a year doing outreach with both landlords as well as tenants, just in terms of educational awareness, making sure everybody understands what the implications of the program. Any time that goes into 2019 just, you know, shortens that window that we have for doing that outreach, but we've already significantly padded the amount of time in terms of making sure all the tenants and landlords understand the rule changes that you're going to consider adopting.
Thank you, Chip.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have Lee Wimberly.
My name is Lee Wimberly. I've been a resident in Renton since 1977. A few weeks ago, my wife and I came and asked for consideration and support regarding the closing of the old chamber building on Rainier, and I'm now here to thank the city and the council for postponing the closing of that till the first of, through March, and assure the council that work is being done to address the permanent housing of the meal coalition program. So once again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. All right, I am going to butcher this name, Hamid... I'm not going to even...
Good enough. Take it easy for your fat carzada.
Thank you.
Council members, I just want to address the issue about the rental ordinance as well. We've had a rental business since 1971, '72, it's a small family operation, we have about maybe 26 units, and you know, considering there's been a huge property tax increase of almost 17% this last year alone, we've had a big uptake in the property tax, which is really challenging for us financially, as well as insurance costs have gone up for us and liability costs for protecting the property. And we also feel that having a fair and equitable amount for the fees would be, should be reconsidered for the small business owners especially, to be more proportional. Keep in mind also that a lot of the large developments that, you know, have been going on in Seattle, a lot of them, there's been a long history of small family businesses retiring or leaving the rental business and selling to these large developers who come in and really increase the rents and force, you know, people who cannot afford housing out, and we've observed some of those people because our rents are not very high, you know, so that's just something to consider to the people that need housing really bad and that's affordable, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Pierce?
Good evening, council members. My name's Heather Pierce. I represent the Rental Housing Association of Washington, a nonprofit member association comprised of more than 5,300 independent mom-and-pop rental property owners around the state of Washington. And I'm here tonight to thank the city of Renton for reaching out to RHA early in the development phase to collaborate on a residential rental housing registration and inspection program. RHA and city staff met and worked on crafting a policy that would comply with state law, was equitable and constitutional to rental property owners, and demonstrated efficiency in operation and program management. In general, the final draft of Renton's registration and inspection program proposal incorporates much of the feedback and recommendations made by RHA and rental housing business input in general. In fact, Renton's model is similar to Tacoma's complaint-driven model, where a certificate of inspection is only required if a tenant requests an inspection and the city finds that the landlord has failed to fulfill an obligation required under RCW 59.18.060. RHA supports the targeted complaint-driven model for a municipal inspection program because it provides an infrastructure for the city to address failing rental properties without disrupting or overburdening the broader rental housing market. This targeted approach conserves public resources and allows the city to fulfill its goal to ensure that Renton residents in the rental housing market are living in healthy housing units, which is the biggest goal here. One remaining item, though, in the existing proposal is that the registration fee disproportionately impacts our mom-and-pop rental owners. For this reason, RHA respectfully requests that Renton City Council defer the final vote on ordinance 5913 until the blanket $150 registration fee can be revised to be more equitable and constitutional, a tiered model that considers the disproportionate burden the fee has on single-family and small-unit count owners. And I also want to extend the Rental Housing Association as a place that we could partner with the city of Renton on educating tenants and landlords alike. We have a very strong education platform, and we are happy to participate in partnering on educating on this ordinance, and I want to thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Hedy? Okay, all right. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. Please, come up to the microphone, you have five minutes. State your name and city of residence for record.
My name is Mary Ryan. I live at 123 Main Avenue South in Renton. I am concerned about the $150 fee. Now Heather said that she believed that this ordinance was drafted to make sure that the minimum standards are met. It doesn't, I mean, I read it three times today, and it appears to me it's a source of money. If you get, how many rental houses do we have in Renton? How many rental properties? It's got to be a big source of money. And do you, Heather, do you... Hi, Mr. Fat Carzada. I can pronounce his, I can pronounce his name.
Can you address your comments to the council, please?
Now I have rental houses. Today's Monday morning. You guys don't understand how tight it is to operate. I paid $46,000 in property taxes this year. I didn't have a vacation. Today is Monday morning. In order to save $12, so I don't get a 20-gallon or larger garbage bill, I'm Monday morning at 6:45, I leave the house, I take the extra garbage, I go to the bins and make sure that if one is overflowing, I put it in another. Now I could solve this Monday morning problem by increasing the size of each one of these garbage cans, but that would cost me $30 more a month. $150, this is a lot of money every year. Now, things are pretty good, or have been for the last four or five years, but it's not going to be that way all of the time. We pay, we pay a lot of attention, I mean, when you change the garbage bills to Republic, it costs me $2.50 more each month because at 50 cents a stamp, I have to mail five of the garbage bills to tenants who don't have email. This is, this is a big deal for me. That's $2.50, that's 25, that's $30 a year. And I know the city doesn't care because if you, because if you did, you wouldn't have done it that, the way that you did it. We have to mail out our garbage bills to our tenants, they come to us. No longer does the city distribute them. You probably don't know that because you don't pay any garbage bills but your own. But $150 is too much. It's not fair. I have more than one property in Renton, I'd be happy to pay one $150 bill to, for a business license that covered all my properties. Would you? Fat Carsada would be happy to pay $150 for their rental properties too, I'm sure, but 100, $150 each. I have 10 of them.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I did, I did want to clarify that it is only one, you'd only pay one time, that each property owner would only pay $150 once per year.
I don't believe that's the way it really...
That is, that is the way, yes.
It is, but I think, I think the reason it's confusing is because it's whether you own six properties or whether you own, or six units or 2,000 units, you would pay $150.
They're not all in one spot, they're at different locations, you understand.
All within the city of Renton?
In the city of Renton.
Yeah. The city of Renton would charge $150 just one time. So someone like yourself that has multiples in the city, it's not quite as hard on you as it is for someone who has just one.
Right.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I'll tell you that we were sensitive to this issue, and I'll just say that from my standpoint, there were a lot of other aspects of this when it was first proposed that I was concerned about, and we did work hard on this, Rental Housing Association has said, to make it more complaint-driven, so we didn't have everybody getting inspection every year, which would have been very expensive, but we never, we ended up with difficulties in figuring out how to work our, it basically came down to our business licensing software to resolve that, trying to get below the 150, although I'll tell you, I'm hearing enough right now that I am maybe personally interested in giving it one more try to see if we can resolve it, but it, the city was looking at a pretty large expense because the standard business license fee is $150, and we were trying to find mechanisms where we could get below that, and we kind of came up short. But that, that was the one issue that, there's actually at least three of us up here that also own rental properties, so we're quite familiar with the situation we're talking about where you're trying to save every dollar and...
It's not just dollars, it's actually pennies, you know. This makes a difference to me. I can afford 150 for all of them. But I read this, and the way that, the way that it looks to me, the way the city, 20 years ago, the city imposed this business license on all of us property owners, and then the real estate industry kind of got together, and we kind of agreed we just wouldn't pay it. I mean, this is not just in Renton, this is in Bellevue, this is, this was all around Puget Sound, and what are you going to do about it? And so what happened was the municipalities stopped trying to force us to pay it. So what I see here is a mechanism to force us to pay it because the city can go around, and if we don't have a business license, they can, they can, if we don't have this business license for this property now, what they can do is, it doesn't, I don't believe, I don't believe you need a complaint to do it. The city would just have to say you don't have a business license, then we'd have to pay the business license. We'd have to, we'd have to buy a building inspection, and so the way that you guys are enforcing this, it appears to me kind of, I don't know the word, it's police-like? Do you see what I mean? When, if we don't pay it, this is like what we did before, that you will force us to pay it, like getting a ticket, and because this is what happened before. Do you, am I, is this news to any of you, or do you know that the municipalities around the sound have tried to do this to property owners before?
Well, if I may.
Please.
So, yeah, so it's, I think you're trying to say it's punitive, like as if we're trying to, as if we're trying to punish landlords.
No, that's how you're going to get your money.
Okay, and I want to assure you that that was not my intention, and I'm quite certain it was not the intention of anyone on the council. What we're actually, what we're trying to address as a city with this is we do know that there are some bad actors out there, and the Rental Housing Association is aware of this too. We all know that there's, there are people that are bad landlords, or that have allowed their buildings for maybe reasons that they can't even control to fall into disrepair and become dangerous. And so we were looking for a mechanism to be able to resolve those, but without impacting all the good actors out there that are trying to do day-to-day business, and I very much agree with the Rental Housing Association that the mom-and-pops are providing very nice, clean, low-income, great rental services, and we're trying not to harm all those people that are really showing conscientiousness and caring for their units, but at the same time, having a way that we can, we can not only have the, you know, have it codified that we're allowed to go in and inspect, but also have expectations clearly identified for landlords, and then have actually the money to be able to pay staff to actually go and do the inspections. So the intention that we had sort of coalesced around as a council was, is if it was, if it was complaint-driven and it was fair, it was not too expensive, that we would, we would go forward with it. And then, like I say, we took the Rental Housing Association's input and made a lot of good changes, then finally got stuck on the mechanism of the funding, and that's where we had the most, you know, controversy as a council, because somebody who has just one unit has to pay $150 a year, just like somebody who has 1,000 units, and that was kind of the only sticking point. But I will tell you that one of my concerns was I want to do outreach, there's a lot of people in town who have, you know, maybe two people got married and they have a condo and they're renting it, and I don't want those people to be punished when the city shows up and says, hey, you've got to sign up for this business license. I want the city to work with those people to help them do it.
Mr. Corman, we got that.
Yeah, so that's where we are.
Ma'am, you've got about...
The way that I read this...
Ma'am, you've got about 30 more seconds before...
The way that I read this looks to me like this is a source of money. If you get $150 from every landlord, there's big money here, and you don't think that the Department of License, the Department of, the real estate, the real estate law is sufficient?
Sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I came in a little late too, and I'd like to speak briefly on this subject. My name is Star Taverner. I am a landlord. I have one house in Renton. $150 a year fee will increase the rent $12.50 to my tenants every month. So every month, you are raising my tenant's rent by $12.50. And you might say, gee, that's not much. I'm going to pass my cost of $150 that you impose onto my tenants, and now my low-income tenants get to have $12.50 less a month because they have to pay that more in rent because you just upped their rent. So I'd like to see you reconsider this. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor.
Please, briefly, because we have to move on.
There's two items of correspondence that I was asked by the Chair of the RAC if I could have those read tonight into the record, which is not entirely unusual if people can't be present, and I'd like to ask the council if we could do that.
There any objections? Please.
Okay, I have two letters. The first one is signed by Warren Hendrickson, Northwest Mountain Regional Manager for Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. The other one is Stephen Ratzloff, President of the Washington Seaplane Pilot Association. And the third signatory is Marlene Mant, who's the Chair of the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. So it's addressed to Mayor Law and City Council members. We are Warren Hendrickson, Stephen Ratzloff, and Marlene Mant, and it's the AOPA, not sure what that stands for, but Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, I believe. Anyway, it's the world's largest general aviation organization with over 10,000 members in Washington State and 466 based at Renton Municipal Airport. The Will Rogers Wiley Post Memorial Seaplane Base is the largest such facility in Washington State, and the one most used by WSPA members, which is the Washington Seaplane Pilot Association. As you know, the RAC has been formally serving the last four years as the Planning Advisory Committee for the Airport's Master Plan Update. Aware that the city council will soon choose a preferred airside alternative for the airport as part of the master plan update process, we wish to make the following points, echoing in parts the verbal comments Warren Hendrickson made at the December 3rd council meeting. The public process and level of stakeholder involvement exhibited to date by the city has fallen woefully short of our collective expectations. The city staff recommendation for Alternative 5 as the preferred alternative is disrespectful of the four years of time, effort, and thoughtful deliberations of the Renton Airport Advisory Committee. Not a single member of the RAC voted for Alternative 5 at its October 16, 2018 meeting. City staff acknowledges that Alternative 5 offers the fewest benefits toward the master plan's objectives. For these reasons, we support Alternative 4 and Alternative 6 in that order as the more appropriate options for the preferred alternative, mirroring the recommendation made by the RAC. We acknowledge that for the first time in four years, following public comments made at the December 3, 2018 city council meeting, the master plan update documents have been posted on the city's airport website page. While long overdue, thank you for that improvement. The lack of a WSPA representative on the RAC is a major stakeholder deficiency that must be corrected as soon as possible. The next step in the process in early 2019 will be deliberations for a preferred landside alternative. The alternative must strongly consider both general aviation's future facilities at the airport and potentially relocated seaplane-based facilities in whole or in part. There's a significant opportunity to chart a course which will enhance the Renton Airport Inv... environment and surrounding community, particularly on the west side. A great example is the seaplane base at Tavoris, Florida. In the Tavoris example, the seaplane base development has spawned a series of other improvements to the city and the airport, including a hotel, restaurant, and new businesses. Accordingly, the following needs to be immediately addressed as the process continues to move forward. A specifically designated WSPA slot must be made available on the RAC. This can be done in one of two ways, either by increasing the RAC membership by one such slot with primary and alternate members, or by redesignating one of the two at-large RAC positions as a WSPA slot, again with primary and alternate members. A simple amendment to the authorizing city ordinance is all that will be required to enact this improvement. A level of public and stakeholder involvement that far exceeds what has been observed to date, and publication of all existing and future pertinent documents and alternatives relating to the master plan update on the city's website. Make no mistake, the, the master plan update and specifically the airport layout plan will chart the future of the Renton Municipal Airport for the next decade and more. Only with improved public and stakeholder involvement can the best outcome be achieved. Rest assured that AOPA and WSPA will remain fully engaged. We greatly appreciate the work the RAC has done thus far and we encourage the staff and elected leadership of the city of Renton to heed their skilled and highly valued input. Sincerely, and it's signed by Hendrickson, Ratzloff, and Mant. The next letter is from Ms. Marlene Mant. It was, Dear Mayor Law, it was four years plus since the RAC accepted responsibility to study and provide recommendations back to council on the airport master plan. On 19 October, the RAC met, reviewed the three alternatives, took both a hand vote and a roll call vote. Of the three alternatives, Alternative 4 received the most votes, followed by, excuse me, followed by Alternative 6. Alternative 5 received a no vote. I would like to call to your attention, Alternative 4 received an equal split between neighborhood and airport representatives, which is an important consideration. I voted for Alternative 6 based on the safety aspect by having EMAS on both ends of the runway. Looking back, I would have voted for Alternative 4, the reason being with the narrowing of the existing runway width, it takes away from the tenants the necessary space to run their businesses. By moving south, which is Alternative 4 of the runway, you ensure the land does not go to new construction or development at a later time. If the city is looking at long-term solutions for the airport, it makes sense to buy land south of the airports and several businesses on Airport Way have gone out of business, making it easier for the city to purchase and hold the land for future consideration for airport land use. Need for hangars and tie-downs space in parentheses. Alternative 4 would enable the airport master plan the safety zone required by FAA and necessary space for general aviation hangars and tie-downs. That's it.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, up next, Consent Agenda. We have eight items on the consent agenda. Are there any items the council member would like to see pulled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Seeing none, I move the consent agenda be adopted as read.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Witche, that the consent agenda be adopted as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Unfinished business. Mr. Person.
Uh, yes. Do I do the committee the whole report?
Yes.
First of all, we have a committee the whole report.
Okay, committee of the whole committee report, council policy updates. Committee of the whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the updates to the following council policies. 801, council president, president pro tempore. 802, meetings of the city council. 803, agenda order of business and approval of the council meeting minutes. 804, council correspondence. 805, committees of the council. 806, rules that debate decorum, voting requirements and procedures. 807, legislative ordinances and resolutions. 808, lobbying by a council member. 809, city council requests for staff assistance. 810, filling council vacancies. 811, council email. And 813, teleconferencing attendance at council meetings. The committee further recommends that the resolution regarding this matter be presented for reading and adoption. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance, I mean, the committee of the whole?
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Corman, that the council concur in the recommendation of the committee of the whole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Person?
Finance?
Finance. Finance committee reports.
Okay, I have four finance committee reports. The first is approval of claims of payroll vouchers. The finance committee approves the following payments, accounts payable, total payment of $4,562,567.58 for vouchers 112618, 370074 through 370076, 370092 through 370353. Payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5935 through 5944, 370077 through 370091, and two wire transfers plus payroll, total payment of $1,458,275.06 for payroll vouchers, which include 695 direct deposits and nine checks. This is for the November 1st through 15th, 2018 pay period. And then municipal court, total payment of $6,706.82 for vouchers 017328 through 017348. This is signed by the committee chair and a member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Before I make the motion, I just want to, hey, this is, I don't know how many years I've been on the finance chair, but this is my last, uh.
Oh, yeah, it is.
My last meeting as the finance chair and there's just a couple things that we paid King County $1,438,940.15 last month for a various garbage. It takes our residential garbage, but it takes all of the stuff that's like collected by the street sweeper, they, we just can't, we just don't dump it, we have to take it to a hazardous county. And there's about 10 of those and I won't list them all for you, but we spent over a million dollars on that. And in the police department, we bought three bulletproof vests for $1,028.50 for each one. They're not cheap. And our auto parts bill for repairing cars to NAPA Auto Parts was $2,290.15 for the month. And that's only one of about three stores they use. And I think the other thing that shows a little bit of what our economy is doing is Renton High School, we paid the Renton High School $126,122.32 in pass-through impact fees for building of new residential construction. So, those are just the last four little things I can talk about. And with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The next finance committee report is the King Conservation District Tree Canopy Assessment Grant. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement for performance of conservation services for the King Conservation District Tree Canopy Assessment Grant Project in the amount of $6,000 with no direct expense to the city. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is another one of those goodies that we're not paying for, so with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The next finance committee report is the Landscape Maintenance Contract Amendment Number 7 to Contract Number 16078. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve Amendment Number 7 for a three-year extension, 2019 through 2021, to the Agreement for Services, CAG 16078, in the amount of $417,429.10 per year between the City of Renton and Camberg Corporation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is another one of these unintended expenses. As we add shrubbery to the roadways and make it everything look nice, we have to have, pay somebody to take care of it. And this is about a, over a 200 and some odd thousand dollar increase this year for the next few years because labor and industries decided that the cities, all cities, not just the city of Renton, but all cities, had to pay the federal minimum wage for constructions by the, what a union job would be like on the freeway and stuff. And so that makes the hourly wage for somebody doing, being a gardener, $37 a hour that we, that we are required to, to pay. So, with that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Pavoni, that the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, the final finance committee report is the approval of the 2019 Symmetra Excess Loss Agreement. The finance committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2019 Symmetra Excess Loss Agreement in the amount of $413,720, which protects the city from unforeseen high-dollar medical claims. The premium for excess loss coverage is a 2.33% decrease compared to current rates. The individual deductible stop-loss amount will continue to be $250,000, which provides coverage to the plan for high-dollar claims that exceed that amount. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This is another good news report and we want to, and I personally want to thank staff, and I know Mr. Pavoni does too, because he was in the meeting and recommended approval of this. Our staff got a 30, when we went back to our insurance carrier from last year, they wanted a 36% increase in the premium rates. They were able to negotiate with a different company, the, this lower rate and save us a lot, lot less, I think it's 12 or 13% less than we paid the year before for the same amount of money. So I, thank you, Ellen, and your staff. With that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee.
Second.
It's moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that we, council concur in the recommendation of the finance committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Before I move on, Mr. Person, thank you for all your years of service on the finance committee. I will, the committee will not be the same without you on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Corman.
All right. Sorry, it seems like I have some complicated things tonight, but the.
[laughing].
Just a little bit. And I have a cold to go with it, so, so that'll make it so that I can't talk too much. But the Transportation Committee, you, you will recall that last week we held the report on the master plan preferred airside alternative. We, as a council, asked our staff to, to put out a memo and put it on the website to inform the public. We'd had some people say they, they hadn't heard enough yet and wanted time for input. The staff did rally and worked hard to put a memo up, but it, it didn't make it on the website until Thursday. And so we're hearing a little bit that people are saying that they still didn't really get enough time to review it and to come in with their comments. And so, I think, because of open public meetings, I've not talked to the Transportation Committee since the time of all this unfolded, because we haven't had another meeting. But at this point, I'm, I'm sort of of a mind to potentially hold this, this item again and, and give people some more time with it. I do want to say that being cognizant of the grants and, you know, what's going on, I did meet with the airport leadership over this, during this week, as well as Greg Zimmerman, to try and get clarity, is there some grant that's going to slip away from us, you know, if, that we need, that, like, we're up against a hard deadline. And, and that's not actually the case, but, but the case is, it is serious. We're, we're running behind in this master plan. It's not really the fault of our own staff. It's, um, it's a lot of things. It's bureaucracy. It's, um, you know, the FAA does reviews and those take time and it's just a long process. But, um, but during the time that this delays, we're having a hard time really getting grants for anything. So we have taxiways that need to be repaired and we, we're unable to apply for grants for those. Also, the fact there's no master plan is causing individuals that are leasing property at the airport to be unable to add on to their buildings and things with a, because there's no understanding of what's going to be happening there. So, there's a lot of good reasons to keep this moving forward. But then, there's also, obviously, there's, there's, it's always important to have public involvement. And one of the things the memo said I want to highlight is, and this, I was, I was at the RAC committee meeting and, and I agree with everything they've said about how hard the people on the RAC work to understand airport concerns and to resolve those concerns. But in the meeting where we voted on the options, I don't think it was announced how much property we were talking about taking. And so that's the balance that we need to strike and, and in the next, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be three or four weeks before the council meets again. So if the council chooses to have me hold this report, that means there's another three or four weeks for people to think about this. But I just wanted to clarify that the, the Alternative 5, which is the one the staff's recommending, takes the least amount of property from, of, that belongs to private parties in our city, but it still requires a, a taking of, or a acquisition of 36 private properties that we do not currently have our hands on. So those are, those are all properties owned by businesses and individuals and homes and, and they're, they're, you know, they're not ours right now. So it would, I mentioned eminent domain, you know, last week. I, I don't know if we'd have to use eminent domain or if we could achieve these people's price, but 36 properties for the alternative the staff was recommending. The, the alternative that was the favorite of the RAC, and again, I don't think the people in the RAC fully knew what this really would mean, but 95 properties would have to be acquired that the, the city currently does not own, as well as 22 new easements. And believe me, that's a lot. I mean, I've seen us widen roads and things and we needed to do, you know, a fraction of that and it takes years and it's expensive. And often, we're just trying to get a piece of these properties. So these are large properties. So, and then Alternative 6 was 67 properties. So, I have a feeling that if this was really, you know, well-vetted, that, that people that own those 95 properties would probably be in here with an opinion as well. So, given that, I, I guess I, I don't want to, I don't want to cause us to delay too much, but I would, I would just, and I don't know if it takes for me to hold the report if.
I think you just hold the report.
Let, let me just show of, well, I don't know if show of hands, but if anybody disagrees that I would.
Is there any objection to council member Corman holding the report for, until our next meeting?
I would expect that one objection to be the council member that takes over as Chair of Transportation.
[laughing]. You will notice, that is who I looked, yeah.
Do it, Ryan.
I looked directly at him when I said.
With that, that's my last. I hope you'll say the kind things about me.
You're not retiring though.
No, that's true. It's true.
Hot potato it right over there.
Okay. So there are no objections to him holding the report. Let's hold the report until our next meeting.
Maybe my, my last comment would be, for those people listening, and if you could, if you're listening and you could get the word out to people that aren't listening, please, the master plan, the preferred alternatives on the website, take a look. It's easy to find. I made sure it was clickable, linkable from the homepage of the website. And email us your, your comments and concerns on that master plan, because we will be picking this up soon. If, if we don't, our airport's going to start losing a lot of money. And for those people that, that, that do fly out of that airport and have businesses on that airport, it means your taxiways are going to start falling apart, things like that. So we gotta, we gotta keep it, we gotta keep it going, so, thank you.
All right. Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business. I can't top airports in finance.
Mr. McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor, although it sounds like I may be inheriting some for a future meeting.
It sounds like it. Ms. Witche?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one committee report.
Okay, Utilities Committee Committee Report, Kenny Dale 320 Pressure Zone Reservoir Project Construction Services Contract with Murray Smith Incorporated. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with Murray Smith Incorporated in the amount of $479,337 for professional services during construction of the Kenny Dale 320 Pressure Zone Reservoir. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witche.
So this was another long-time coming project preceded me by quite some time, but now that we are way into building our fire station, it's time to get started on the water tower. So with that, I recommend that council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witche and seconded by Mr. McGurven, that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. We're going to move on to legislation. We have two resolutions, three ordinance for first reading and advancement to second and final reading, and then 15 ordinance for second and final reading. I hope you have some water, Jason.
That's a lot of.
Here we go. First is a resolution regarding the Alive and Free Interlocal Agreement. A resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the cities of Auburn and Kent for the purpose of planning, funding, and implementing a joint funding program entitled the Valley Cities Association for the YMCA of Great East, Greater Seattle Alive and Free Program.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Will the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The next resolution is regarding the adoption of council amended policies. Resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending, amending council policies 801 through 811 and 813.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Will the resolution be adopted as read?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that the resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
The first ordinance for first reading and advancement to second and final reading is regarding submittal requirements, which is docket item number 143. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 48120 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending submittal requirements specific to application type and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Section 48120 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending submittal requirements specific to application type and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Next ordinance is regarding administrative code interpretations, which is docket number 153. This is also for first and second reading. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41230, 42160, 4280, 4280, 42110, 42120, 4470, 4, 4100, 44, 45130, 4790, 48100, 49150, 49200, 49240, 41060, and 41060H, and the definitions of clear vision area in Section 41130, retail big box and retail sales in Section 411180, deleting the definition of big box retail in Section 41120, adding a definition of wholesale retail to Section 411230, and amending Sections 874 of the Rent Municipal Code, codifying administrative code interpretations from January 5th, 2018 to October 5th, 2018, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be advanced to second and final reading tonight.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
All right, here we go again. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41230, 4260, 4280, 42110, 42120, 4470, 44100, 45130, 4790, 48100, 49150, 49200, 49240, 41060, and 41060H, and the definitions of clear vision area in Section 41130, retail big box and retail sales in Section 411180, deleting the definition of big box retail in Section 41120, adding a definition of wholesale retail to Section 411230, and amending Section 874 of the Rent Municipal Code, codifying administrative code interpretations from January 5th, 2018 to October 5th, 2018, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Ms. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll, roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance for first and second reading is regarding the authorization of the property tax levy. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the 2009 property tax levy increase as previously contemplated by ordinance 5897.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the 2019 property tax levy increase as previously contemplated by ordinance 5897.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Ms. Witchy, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the next 15 ordinances are for second and final reading. The first is alarm system regulations. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, repealing and replacing Chapter 6.3 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending alarm system regulations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Pavoni. I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Person, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding quasi-judicial appeals, which is RMC Title IV Amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 48110F and 4970R of the Rent Municipal Code, by allowing the city council to render a quasi-judicial appeal decision affirming the underlying decision without substantive review, eliminating a hearing examiner appeal when the hearing examiner is the underlying decision-maker, specifying appeal paths for procedural and substantive environmental appeals, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is regarding street name changes, docket 144. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Sections 911.2, 911.5, and 911.7 of the Rent Municipal Code, by defining the term honorary street name, establishing procedures for the assignment of honorary street names, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, the next is ordinance 5904, Short Term Rentals, which is docket D145. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 4.4 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding Section 4455, short-term rentals, regulating short-term rentals of a dwelling unit or portion thereof, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Ms. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call, roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance is regarding downtown window transparency, docket 146. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending ground level details in subsection 4.3100E5, and adding commercial sign regulations regarding buildings located in the CD zone to subs, to subsection 4411H4B of the Rent Municipal Code regarding downtown window transparency, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, the next is ordinance 5906, Variance Procedures, docket 147. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 49250B1 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding development standards from which commercial and industrial land uses can be granted a variance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
And Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, the next one is short plat, formal plat streamlined process, which is docket D148. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4145, 4610, 4660, 4680, 4720, 4750, 4760, 4770, 4780, 47110, 47130, 47200, and 4960, Sections 47140 and 47190, and the definitions of lot line adjustment map in subsection 48120D12, and short plat, or binding site plan map final in subsection 48120D19 of the Rent Municipal Code, streamlining, clarifying, and updating short plat and formal plat processes, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
Okay, next is mobile food vendors, which is docket 149. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4260, 4280, 4920, excuse me, 49240, 48240, and the definition of mobile food vending in Section 411130 of the Rent Municipal Code, and repealing subsection 4260R of the Rent Municipal Code regarding mobile food vendors, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Ms. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, all ayes, Mr. Mayor.
The ayes have it.
Okay, the next is parking standards, docket D151. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4480F8 and 4480F10 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending parking standards, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. It requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Prince? Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, next is service and social organizations, docket D152. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 4260G, adding a definition of private club fraternal organization to section 41160, and amending the definitions of services off-site, services on-site, and service and social organizations in section 41190 of the Rent Municipal Code, amending regulations related to service and social organizations, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Hey, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
And next is multifamily incentives, tax exemptions, and waive fees. This is one part of docket D154. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending section 4120 of the Rent Municipal Code, by extending and modifying the multifamily housing property tax exemption, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
And Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
All right, next is waive fee incentive changes and extension, the second part of docket D154. All right, yeah. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 41210A, 41210B, and 41210C of the Rent Municipal Code, by extending and modifying the waiver of certain development mitigation fees, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read. Requires a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Mr. McGurven?
Aye.
Ms. Witchy?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The ayes have it.
The next ordinance is 5913 Residential Rental Program Ordinance, docket D118.
Mr. McGurven, do you, what do you want to do with this?
Just question, do we need to move anything before discussion, or can we discuss?
You can discuss.
All right. So, since I have the floor, I will go ahead and say that my thoughts on this are that, I don't know that a lot will change between now and then, but hearing staff's input that it wouldn't necessarily have a budgetary impact, I'm somewhat inclined to say, let's go ahead and give it another, to defer this action on this until a later date. The only question I just wanted to clarify real quick, if I may, question staff, and I think this has been answered before, but for the benefit of the audience here tonight, I want to make sure it gets answered. And the $150 business license fee is the exact same fee any business, who is a business in the City of Renton would pay. So, if you manufacture airplane toys, or if you manufactured full-scale 737s, you're paying that same business fee, is that correct? Okay, that's, I just want to make sure. But, for the, I'd love to hear what others on the council say, but I'm happy to hold this over until a future meeting, if that's the wish.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I agree in holding this over, and I'd like to be sure, the Rental Housing Association raised several questions about the constitutionality of it, and in the interim, I'd like to get him, give him a chance to review, review that case. And, you know, we can save a lot of money if we don't get sued, if we take a little bit of time, so...
When would we like to see it back? I don't want to just leave it hanging out there.
Well, let's say the third meeting in January.
So, we meet on the 7th, 14th, 21st?
No, the 21st is a holiday.
Well, let's meet it on the 14th. We'll bring it back on the 14th.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I just wanted to bring up one thing as well. There was some consideration, or some comment, that this was going to be a profit to the city, a revenue source, and I just want some clarification from staff as to the cost of the program versus what we might be getting back in fees, and where that, oh, here he is.
I was just going to call you up, Mr. McGurven.
It's a break even, because I'm pretty sure we're not making money on this.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Chip Vincent, CED for the record, we're absolutely not making any money on this. In fact, because we haven't actually had a program, we're actually going to run it at a loss initially, based on some, you know, some statistical projections that we've made. We're going to have to see how it really works, but based on the original very conservative analysis we have done, the program doesn't pay for itself yet, and we're going to have to subsidize it with other revenue sources. We're just trying to, as Councilmember Corman said earlier, we were trying to balance a lot of different factors in terms of making this financially very reasonable, as well as provide for the outcome we all desired. So, there's a lot of balancing that went on this, and we can continue to work on this. But, thank you for asking the question, because this is not absolutely, there is zero profit in this for the city.
I just wanted the folks out there to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to hold this one over?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would recommend, if we want this to come back by the 14th, that we make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGurven.
I would like to move that this ordinance be, action on this ordinance be deferred until January 14th.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. McGurven, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that action on this ordinance be held until January 14th. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, I guess...
Yes, Mr. Person.
Is the council then going to have some discussion at that meeting, or...
Well, I'm sure you can probably have it put on committee of the whole.
Okay.
For, you know, a brief...
We'll schedule that for committee of the whole on the 14th as well.
Okay. All right.
See, that's why I depend on you.
I'm here for you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, we've got two more to go. Ordinance 49, or, excuse me, 5914, which is the rezone part of the comprehensive plan. That, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, changing the zoning classification of four parcels, 7227801315, 7227801290,